Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for September 14th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, Mike?
Yep, just one. Earlier the last month, Abington Firefighters Local 2080 joined forces with Abington Police Association Local 476 in a fundraising effort for the COPS for Kids with Cancer Foundation, which has a local family in East Bridgewater who hosts Lemonade Stands for the cause. This was achieved via T-shirt and decal sales to the public with the collaborative design of both unions. Today, these funds were presented to the local branch of COPS for Kids with Cancer, which totaled $2,000 between the police and fire unions. Collectively, after evaluating T-shirt sales, they have raised upwards of 9,000 between the T-shirt sales and Lemonade Stand funds this year for this incredible foundation. So, good job from both the
Thank you.
police and fire union and this family in East Bridgewater.
Thank you. Kevin?
No.
Jim?
Nothing tonight.
Alex?
No.
I have one from the Community Preservation Act. The Community Preservation Committee will be meeting on September 17th, 7:00 PM at the Town Hall in this room, the Carter Room. Holding the meeting to discuss the schedule and place for CPA projects for this fiscal year. If you have a project application ready for this year or thinking of submitting a project, they strongly recommend that you attend the meeting. Please send only one representative if you are part of a group to limit the number of people. If you are interested but not comfortable meeting in person, please contact Kelly Johnson at KJohnson@AbingtonMass.gov for other options. Thank you. First up, we have a pinning ceremony from the Abington Fire Department, so I'll turn it over to you, Chief, and take it away.
Evening. Thank you, Board. Thank you, anybody watching at home. Normally, any time we have any type of a badge pinning ceremony, whether it's a new firefighter or a promotion, as you've seen in the past, we're normally filling this entire room in the fire department. Obviously, under the COVID restrictions that we have to adhere to, we're not able to do that. So, we're going to, and we have quite the night for you. We have a total of seven people we're going to be recognizing. So, your parking lot is full of firefighters, their families, and the apparatus, and we're going to rotate them through as few as the time as we can to adhere to all of the restrictions that we have. To begin with, we're going to, Depp, if you want to come up, we're going to recognize Deputy Chief Ron Howe, who has retired back in May. We're finally able to get a chance to give him his due. Normally, we would have had a large open house at the fire station, firefighters and fire chiefs from the other towns would have come to see him. We couldn't do that this year, so it was kind of a quick, it just sort of faded away. So, we want to recognize him, and because Deputy Howe is retiring, that frees up all of the other promotions that will occur after this tonight. It's because Ron retired that opened up all of the possibilities for continued growth up through the ranks as well as into the department. But just a quick bio for the deputy. Again, his family's here, his dad is also in the audience. His dad, Hap Howe, Wallace Howe, is the former Abington Fire Chief himself. Retired back about 1989, I believe, Hap? Eighty-eight, thank you, before my time. You're continuing the trend of not only being a fire officer, a deputy chief, now you're in the same ranks as the retirees, so congratulations. Ron started his career in 1984. If I'm wrong on these, please correct me. He was our first fire department-trained paramedic. In other words, he took the courses throughout his career, you know, while maintaining his EMT, he took all of the paramedic courses while he was still a firefighter. Anybody after him, pretty much there are paramedics already coming in. We still had a couple others that went that route as well. But Ron was our first trained paramedic to come up within the ranks. He was promoted captain in 2007, promoted deputy fire chief in 2015, and he retired just back in May of 2020 this year. So, to commemorate his retirement, when you retire, you actually get a retirement badge, but it's also a wallet. Depp, the firefighters, we know you're transitioning to retirement. We feel for you, so we all chipped in, passed it around, and we threw a dollar in there for you, so congratulations. Representative Sullivan also may have something for Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief? Hello, gentlemen. How are you? Deputy Chief Howe, so when you did retire, I actually presented you a citation at the firehouse. But today, I have a citation from the governor and lieutenant governor. It says, "Deputy Chief Ronald D. Howe, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your over 35 years of dedicated service to the Abington Fire Department. This seventh day of May," obviously, we're not in May or the seventh day, "in the year of 2020, signed by Governor Charles Baker and Lieutenant Governor Palito. And we just want to say congratulations, and you'll be truly, truly missed here in the Abington Fire Department." Thank you.
And although we do miss you, Ron's not going to be a stranger. In fact, just the other day during our 9/11 ceremony, he actually helped to proceed with that. He did one of the readings for us at Station 2. Station 1 is doing the construction, as you know. So, Ron's not going to be a stranger, we know that. However, as much as your wife has been pleading with us to take you back, we really cannot do that, especially now that you have your retirement badge, so. But thank you very much. You're going to be missed. Next up, we can have the Glynn family come in. Thank you, House. And we're trying to maintain the low numbers in here for you, so. Next, I want to recognize, and the last time I can call him Captain Jack Glynn, because he has since been promoted to the rank of deputy fire chief. Jack, as we all know him, he was, he was the sole person to be able to pass the very difficult and competitive civil service fire deputy fire chief's exam, which he did about a year ago. So, luckily, we had that on the records and on the list. So, when Deputy Howe retired, we automatically, we already had one willing and able member able to take that spot through civil service. Nancy, you want to come up too? Jack started his career in 1996 as our first paramedic to join the fire department after serving briefly for a number, a couple of years in Pinellas County, Florida. He was our department's first paramedic. Jack was promoted fire captain in 2010. He was just promoted deputy fire chief this May, and presenting his badge tonight will be his wife, Nancy. Yes, Stephanie. Jay, they're also here as well.
This is truly, truly, truly an honor. As many of you know, Jack has become not only just a deputy chief here in Abington, but one of my close, close friends, and I truly am so honored to present you this citation. I know you're very looking, very confused, because I actually didn't tell Jack I was doing this tonight. I wanted to surprise him, because he probably would have told me not to do it. And I know Jack wouldn't be here in this position if it wasn't for Nancy and his children, and that's all he talks about, is all you guys, so thank you to you guys and your service to this town as well. So, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to John Jacklynn in recognition of your promotion to deputy chief and your continued dedicated service to the town of Abington. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 14th day of September 2020 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Speaker DeLeo and offered by me, Allison Sullivan. Congratulations."
And I can say, Jack took over the role of deputy fire chief in the middle of the pandemic, within the middle of the shutdown. The deputy chief in Abington is responsible ultimately for the Office of Fire Prevention, which at the time, the state had shut down all inspections. We couldn't go into buildings unless it was an emergency. So, it created quite a backlog. Once that opened up, pretty much at the end, middle end of July, Jack was able to totally reorganize and retool the fire prevention division, and he's not quite caught up, but we're making incredible progress with that. So, immediate trial by fire in your new role. You've done an excellent job, Depp. Thank you. Next up, if we could have the Driscoll family. Thank you, Glyns. They're only going to get younger from this point forward. Come on up, gentlemen. Come up, Jerry. Mike, you can stand here too if you want. So, because Captain Glynn moved up to deputy, that created a position of fire captain. We were fortunate to have four of our members pass the civil service fire captain exam, which is an incredible record to have that many. And it was competitive, and it ultimately came down to firefighter Jared Driscoll, firefighter paramedic Jared Driscoll, who back in May received the promotion of fire captain. Also with Captain Driscoll is his dad, who is retired Abington firefighter, paramedic, Mike Driscoll, who just retired a couple of years ago. You can see, certainly, there's a family element here with some of our members, and that's not lost. A quick bio on Captain Driscoll besides his dad. I believe his family is also here, his wife Heather and his daughters. Heather, if you want to come up, or if you want to come up, if you want to give that to him? Jared started his career in 2011. Jared wears many hats in the Abington Fire Department. He's the assistant mechanic. He's our only hazmat-trained technician. He's a member of the Plymouth County Technical Rescue Association, like his dad prided him. He's a past president of Abington Fire Fighters Local 2 O Wado, and he had a lot of leadership roles with that position. And again, he was promoted captain in May, and Want to do the honors? It's up to you two. Representative Sullivan?
Hi. High five? Your daddy made captain. You excited? It is. I think they're excited. It's my honor to present a citation from the House of Representatives. I know when we first met, it was during a campaign, and you and I, well, the three of us and my mother had great conversation, and I know you wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for your wife and your children and your family here supporting you. So, thank you to your family for their service to the town and supporting you to get you to where you are today. So, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Jared Driscoll in recognition of your promotion to captain and your continued dedicated service to the town of Abington. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 14th day of September 2020 at the State House, Boston, signed by Speaker DeLeo and offered by your state representative, myself, Allison Sullivan. Congratulations."
Thank you very much. Mike, good to see you again. And to continue the trend that they just keep getting younger, next we have our new firefighter, which the positions of all the ranks going up from a firefighter going up to captain, we actually had an opening for a firefighter ultimately, which was to replace Deputy Chief Howe. Lillian? So, now we have firefighter, paramedic, Lillian Janity. We'll call her Lily. I don't want to embarrass her again by calling her Lillian. And we were able to find Lillian from the civil service statewide paramedic list that we requested, and she's been a godsend ever since. We were very impressed with her from the very beginning when we first interviewed her. She really doesn't have much firefighting experience, or she did not when she first came in. She had extensive paramedic experience in the private sector. She had a little bit of firefighter training and experience from the town of Plimpton, where she had shortly been, just joined that department, but then everything shut down with COVID, so even that training wasn't much. But it was enough that she did a little bit of truck driving. And we're going to, we did a lot of training with her already. She began working with us in the middle of August. We did three weeks of extensive initial training with her prior to her going to the fire academy, which she's scheduled to do in October. Then she's going to get the real training. But even the fire academy this year is somewhat of a hybrid model, so that's going to be a challenge for all of us, but I know we're going to overcome it. In the short time that she has been with us, in the three, almost four weeks to a month, the entire department helped, rose up to train her. We gave her some very limited but specific training with what she's able to do until she goes to the fire academy, gets the actual burned buildings and all of the hazardous material training that she will do. But we have a comfort level with her that she's able to operate as a firefighter, paramedic in Abington until her October 26 date that she's going to be assigned at the fire academy. And I want to applaud all of the Abington firefighters for assisting with, with her training, and especially Group 1, who has taken her and they're continuing her training up to today. Today, I actually saw her back the tow truck into the building, in the van, not hitting the building. Supposed to see it, but I did see it, and I was very impressed, and I said, "Next time, we're going to go forward with it," but she's doing good. Firefighting experience, the skills and the abilities, that is something we can teach. The experience she's absolutely going to get, because we're a busy department. What she brought to the table, the compassion and the drive and the self-confidence that you cannot teach, and we're very impressed with that, and we thank you very much. And do you have anybody that would like to present this for you? Sister La Michelle. This is her firefighter badge, which she is only getting for the first time today. Thanks, folks. Impressed. And last but certainly not least, I'd like to bring in two Abington firefighter, paramedics, and recognize them for something that they have just done for the town of Abington. About a year ago, firefighter, paramedic, Justin Silva and Kyle Gerrier approached me and asked if they could take on the task of writing a FEMA grant to try to see if we could get a forest fire vehicle for the town. And I kind of got the same feeling as when your teenager asks, "Can I clean the house or do anything else just to help the family just because we want to?" They went above and beyond with what they did, and not only did they do it successfully, we were awarded with it. We were just awarded a few weeks ago with $209,000 towards a $220,000 custom-made forest vehicle for the town of Abington. We've never really had a custom-made forest fire truck. It's been a long time. The forest fire truck that we have now was a former Navy four-wheel-drive ambulance. That was the chassis, the highway department. We configured that a number of years ago into the forest fire that we have now, and it was great. It served us well, but it's tired. And to be honest with you, Scott, I would have been asking for probably $150,000 to $180,000 with my next capital request to replace that. Now, I only have to ask for the, the Abington grant match of $11,000 to meet the full 220. So, because of the work that these two gentlemen did, and they're working today, still configuring what the vehicle should be, they're specing it out, they're looking in the area at not only different vendors but different towns to see what has been successful to them, what specifically will work for Abington, because we don't have large forests, although we do have a lot of areas up in the state park, up in the national grid right-of-way areas. That's traditionally where we have our fires, a specialized vehicle to be able to get up there and be able to take care of those fires, because we've had some long burning fires in the past, as you may be aware of. So, I'm looking forward to getting this vehicle, hopefully sometime early next year, depending on what estimates we get from that. And that should serve this community for the next 25 to 30 years, from the efforts that, that they willingly did. So, I want to thank you both for the efforts that you've done. And without any further ado, I don't want to take any more of your time unless you have any questions, and we'll turn the meeting back over to you.
I don't. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, chief, thank you to you and your brave men and women for all you do, not just the ones recognized tonight, but the whole department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Next up on our agenda is a public hearing for 7:00 PM, so we do have to hold off by law until 7:00 PM on that. So, if the board doesn't mind, we can move ahead to the action discussion items and maybe get a couple of those out of the way ahead of time. First one being the vote to approve the minutes of August 24th meeting, 2020.
I would make that motion to approve the minutes from August 24th, 2020.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of August 24th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next up is a vote to authorize Abington Town Accountant Sue Mokman to request and receive CARES Act funding on behalf of our community. Of course, this is money coming to the town from the federal government. We just have to authorize Sue to act on our behalf.
I'll make the motion to authorize Sue to act on our behalf.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of authorizing Ms. Mokman to act on our behalf of the community to receive the CARES Act, say aye.
Aye.
I'll come off my fence and say aye as well.
Scott, do you want to give an update on how that works and where we're getting the money from?
So, sorry, I just stepped out. So, all right, yeah. As you may or may not be aware, the, the federal money that came down through the CARES Act to the different states to reimburse us for this pandemic funding and monies that had been allocated specifically for expenses related to COVID-19. Some of it went to the state to disperse, but some of it was also taken down by the Plymouth County Commissioners. That is the money that's earmarked for Plymouth County. So, all the cities and towns within Plymouth County have to apply through this process to the Plymouth County Commissioners for the money that's been earmarked towards us. At this point, we have over two and a half or three million, close to three million earmarked for Abington. We've got about $1 million in there right now that we've put in for reimbursement, and we'll be asking for more as things pile up. Right now, it is set to expire at the end of the year. This authorization that you just did was actually, we started this, the process, we actually started months ago, and they just, for housekeeping purposes, I actually just authorized it as the COO of the town, but they wanted the Board of Selectmen to sort of affirm that, so that's really all this was. But all the, like I said, up to right now, we have over $900,000 that we're awaiting. They've asked for some clarification on some stuff. We've given it back, and I do believe that there'll be a vote on that. We should see that money fairly soon.
Thank you.
Next up is a request for appointment to Historical Commission by Doug Elwood. Does anybody know if Doug was planning on showing up? I would hate to do this if he was planning on coming. I don't know. Haven't heard either way. Why don't we wait on that just in case, in case he might have saw it was after the public hearings? Discuss and vote to close the warrant for the special town meeting? Going to that. Scott, you want to go over what's on the warrant here? Not article by article, but it
No, just, you know, in, in general, what we did is, is the, when we went to our last special town, our annual town meeting, we reduced our budgets because we had yet to hear what our Chapter 70 money coming from the state would be and what our unrestricted government aid from the state would be. We actually had stripped the budget by about 10% on those revenue figures, just to be careful. And anyways, the money did come in higher than we anticipated, which was great news. So, we do have to move that money around, though. So, as it comes in, we have to allocate it and appropriate it. So, we're going to take care of that. We are also going to take care of some of the housekeeping items, things that we didn't do at our annual town meeting that we said we would get to, so there'll be some road acceptances on there. There will be a couple of zoning articles on there. There is a article to ask about a charter change or an amendment to the charter. We'll petition for that. But that's really the, the meat of it. We're also going to establish an affordable housing trust. So, money at the town meeting was allocated to fund the Affordable Housing Trust, but we didn't have the articles of the trust ready. So, we do have that, those articles ready. We're going to push that through.
So, that, that will take place the 19th of October, which will probably be our second meeting of that month. I don't know if you guys want to do the first meeting of that month to go over article by article, because it's been customary in the past that we go over to, through each one, discuss our thoughts on it and take a vote on whether or not to recommend it.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Yeah, I'll have recommendations by them, by, from the finance committee also.
Okay.
That might help you.
Yep.
And then our second meeting will be prior to town meeting.
Yeah, usually, I know last town meeting, they didn't allow us to do that because of COVID regulations, so we'll, we'll see.
If we don't need to, we don't
We'll put that on the agenda for our first one, but we will need a vote, a motion to close the warrant for special town meeting tonight.
I would make that motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting dated October 19th, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion on the special town meeting warrant? All those in favor of closing the town meeting warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
I've got a couple of things, this might be a good time to bring it up before we go into hearing.
Yeah, we got time to
For future meetings, I'd like to see a couple of these things, all of these things on the agenda. One is the clothing collection bins that are around town. I sent an email to Scott and Marty from the Board of Health and asked if we had any regulations on that. And I was under the impression from when I was on the board a few years ago that we did, and Marty says, "We don't have any regulations." And I would like to look into some sort of permitting for these clothing bins. I know some of them at one point have been placed on properties that the owners don't even know they're on, because it happened to be across the street from my office, and I contacted the owner, and they didn't even know the bins were there. It's a vacant lot. So, I think we need to put some restrictions on them. I'm not opposed to the clothing donation I'm not opposed to the clothing donations or things like that, or the books and things we do here at town hall. But I think that very unsightly, there was one at the corner of Route 18 and 123, that someone threw a sofa, kids' toys, and all kinds of other things. And I noticed it was cleaned up today. I think Marty reached out to the owner of the property, and unfortunately, the owner of the property probably had to pay to clean that up. So I think we need some sort of guidelines on that, and Marty is working on that. I'd like to have a meeting with the Board of Health and with us after town meeting to discuss that. The other issue I'd like to put on a future agenda is, I received, I think we all received an email from a resident regarding Shaw Rav as a cut-through. That was built years ago when they developed McQ Circle and extended Shaw Rav, and it's used as an emergency access. Residents don't want it as a cut-through, other people do. So I think it's something that we need to discuss again and just put it out there. And the third item I'd like to see on the agenda is, several people have reached out about, Amazon now is renting South Shore terminals up on Route 18, and I think a lot of the drivers are not familiar with this area, and they're using Summit Road as a cut-through. So I think that's something that we need to nip fairly quickly. Summit Road is not built to have 18-wheelers running through it every day. I know a state representative has reached out to you, and there is some discussion on it. So I'd like to get that on the agenda, too.
Scott, the ball's already rolling on that, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I actually, you know, once I got that complaint, I did reach out to the DPW Director, John Stone, who had the same thoughts and feelings that you did, too. So he went and discussed it with the old colony planning council and asked them if they would participate in the study and help us out with it, and they said they'd get right on it. So they are scheduling that one, and just, you know, I probably, in the few months that I've been here, probably get one call a week right now on different issues relating to traffic that's getting diverted down, off these side streets off of Route 18. Some are because of construction, some are just because of build-out in other areas, whether it be Summer Street and things that are going on in other areas. So we are looking to do sort of a couple of different studies, and certainly one that will look overall into what's going on up and down Route 18. And hopefully, after maybe the annual town meeting, we can revisit the idea of a, some sort of a planner, whether it's a part-time regional planner or however we go about that, but we certainly could use the help as Route 18 finishes up with, you know, sort of figuring out what's going to happen. You can't just shut down one road without it affecting-
Exactly.
-another road.
And I think some of the problem on these side roads, like I said, once Route 18 is completed, it will be better.
Or it will be worse. We're not sure.
Or it could be worse. But the main thing right now, I think, is the 18-wheelers going down Summit Road. So thank you to John Stone for acting quickly on that. He always does.
He really does, and he's made me look good on more than one occasion.
Me, too.
Had to call him and ask for a favor, so. Okay, so being after 7:00, we can do our public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold the public hearing on September 14th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the Carter Hearing Room, 500 Glen Owitz Way, on the petition of Vito Vitaleo, 12 Armistone Street, Brockton, for a Class II license at 135 Bedford Street, DBA Vito's Auto Center. So at this time, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing on the Class II license at Vito's Auto Center, 135 Bedford Street.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor of opening the meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, it's unanimous. Meeting is open. Do we have a representative for Vito's Auto Center? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Vito Vitaleo, 12 Armistone Street, Brockton.
Vito, welcome. So you're looking to take over the current business that's there?
I own the property, and I've been there for 30 years.
So you're looking to go back into it? Your tenant moved out, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
So any changes to the hours or any of the operations? Still selling cars, same amount of cars?
Yes.
Same parking, no changes at all, just the name?
That's the name.
See, the police chief, fire chief, building inspector have all been by, inspected. Nobody seems to have had any issues?
No, I believe all he found was tires that I have to get rid of.
Yeah, a little cleanup, but they said it shouldn't be an issue. Any questions from the board?
No, we have a great letter from a resident of Bank Street.
Yes, not often we get a personal recommendation with it, too, so it says something to character.
Well, like you said, you've been there for, what, 30, 30 years prior?
The debris is cleaned up, or?
It's hard to get a tire guy down there to take the old tires. They will be leaving.
Do you have a timeframe on that?
A week, two weeks.
These are the pictures of the place, or is this the other place?
That is his. That's what he's going to be getting cleaned up with in the next week. He's waiting for the tire guy to come pick that up. Any other questions from the board? Any public butters, neighbors, residents have any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion from the board if they're ready.
Take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. I can take a motion on the license.
And make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the Class II license for Vito's Auto Center, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
It's probably not what he wanted to do, to get back into it.
Okay, being after 7:05, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on August 24th, 2020, at 7:05 in the Carter Room, 500 Glen Owitz Way, on the petition of Larissa de Silvia Rodriguez to transfer the Class II license at 766 Adam Street from Edward McLaughlin, DBA Mass Carmot LLC, to Panda Auto Group. Take a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open. Do we have a representative?
I'm Eddie McLaughlin, from Mass Carmot.
And you're looking to get the license for-
Transferred.
Transferred. Transferred to you or from you?
From me.
From you to?
From you.
Okay.
That's you, sorry.
So what was the reason we continued this last time?
Debris cleanup. We had emails later, later this afternoon that a significant portion of it has been cleaned up, and the minor stuff that's left can just be, if you approve it, the fire inspector and building inspector will just follow up on it.
So all these pictures we have have been cleaned up according to?
Yeah, I think it was just, there was a bit of debris inside the building still, and maybe some minor stuff outside, but all the majority of the stuff, I guess, was cleaned up.
And just for clarification for people watching at home, this is on the corner of 58 and Adam Street and Oak Street. It's the house structure, not the white building with all the other businesses in it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It's the house, and there's a garage there, I believe?
There's a separate garage.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, were you changing the hours at all? So same hours?
Yes.
Same business, same number of cars?
Yes.
I have a question about the number of cars. Can that be, can, since the mechanic business has been extinguished, can I apply, or the new owner actually apply for more cars on the property if it-
Sure. What they would have to do is come back with a new plot plan-
Okay.
-showing that there's room for cars.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think that would have to be a separate hearing, Scott.
Yeah, I think we would advertise it differently.
Right. We'd have to advertise it as an increase in cars.
Increase in cars.
Right.
However, and what if they wanted to use the garage as a business instead of adding more cars? Maybe they just use the garage as a business as it was prior.
What was it prior?
It was an auto repair facility, which had parking assigned to it through the town with the license. So they brought the plot, the previous owner of that business brought a plan as well, with parking designated for that particular business, separate from the used car.
So I'm confused. I thought you just said if they weren't going to do the garage-
If they weren't, but if they weren't, can they apply?
Correct. If they weren't going to use it for repairs, then they could probably apply for an increase in cars. If they're going to use it as a repair garage, is a separate repair license required for that.
All right. Basically, I think I was asking what would be better or easier.
Either one, you'd have to come back for another hearing.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying to get it out here.
Correct, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
I understand.
This is where I bought my first car, many years ago.
And you're still driving it.
Oh, I crashed that a long time ago. I'm probably still paying for it, though. Any other questions from the board? Any public comments, neighbors, butters, residents? No.
I just have one question. Mr. McLaughlin, you own the used car business there now.
I do.
You don't own the property.
I do not.
Okay. And do you do the auto repair there now?
No. I just fix my, I used it to, like, clean my own cars and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay. So there's no auto repair business there?
There's no used cars at all.
Okay, all right. And you're just transferring the license as the tenant to a new tenant?
Just the used car license only.
Correct. Okay. Should we make a motion to close?
If nobody else has any questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Hearing is closed. I'll take a motion on the license.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on approving the license?
Do we want to put anything in there about the building inspector going back, or?
In the email, from what I see here, his department needs, will need to approve it anyway to apply the change of occupancy.
So they'll have to go back anyways.
The form, so it would have to get approved anyway by him before the license was in effect.
I know he had some issues, but yeah, okay.
So motioned and seconded, all those in favor of approving the license transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so now let's handle the request for appointment to the Historical Commission for Doug Elwick. Mr. Elwick is not here. Scott, one applicant for one position, right?
That's it.
Is it a reappointment?
No.
It is a reappointment, isn't it?
Is it a reappointment?
I believe it is.
From my understanding-
No, it's not.
He's coming back.
I know he's on a committee. I didn't know it was this one, though.
He's on, no, he's on a different committee. He explains it in his application, if I can find it quickly. Serves as the president of the Historical Society of Old Abington.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, he's looking for this appointment to act as a liaison between the commission and the HSOA. So a liaison between both commissions.
I'd make the motion to appoint Doug Elwick to the Historical Commission.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Approved and seconded. Any further discussion on appointing Doug Elwick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Could we just, we all got an email today regarding this appointment. Could you just update on the selectman policy, Scott?
Yeah, just to, I guess, paraphrase and give the Reader's Digest version, late in the day today, we did get a question from a concerned citizen. Curious if they, assuming that Doug Elwick is not a registered voter in town, I guess the question was whether he was still eligible to serve on a committee. But in the policies of the selectman manual, at some point in time, they did, under the appointment section, say that non-residents may serve on committees when appointing authority deems it is in the best interest of the committee and the town. You know, and that being said, Doug is a property owner and a taxpayer. He does have a residence here. He lives here. I just, so I don't, I don't think that there's any issue.
So it's not like he's from another town. He splits his time here and somewhere else.
Yeah.
He just happens to be a registered voter elsewhere.
If I can say something on that, I was looking through that today, and it said it was, it was written in 2012, and it was revised in 2014, so that'd probably be a good thing for us to maybe look at and update.
Actually, I thought it was revised after that, when I was on the board before.
The date in the annuals that we got, it's 2014. It'd just be good practice that we keep up with it.
Because I remember when it came up, and I was actually against it until it was explained to me why. And actually, I forget the good reason why, but I remember doing that when I was on the board between '15 and '18.
Okay.
But I think, you know, that's something we should review one of these days, anyway, our policies.
Be good to get some, you know, annual, annual review, or even just-
At least every second, third year, yeah. And it has been that long since we've reviewed the policies of the Board of Selectmen, so putting that on the coming up agenda. Right. That coming up on an agenda item wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, and, you know, I do have an intention of asking other boards, committees, and this one also, to review their current policies, and then we can, as Kevin said, we'll date them-
Right.
-and update the website, and our town website, which is, you know, sort of a project that I want to get into after we get through town meeting or two. But make sure that we have the most current policies and the most current-
I like to see, always see a date on them, so you can always refer to a date, you know, attachment numbers, dates, whatever else, so.
Makes sense.
Thank you. Moving forward, it wasn't on the agenda tonight for public comment. It is the policy of this board to take public comment on anything that could be, that is on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Unfortunately, much like Ron Burgundy, if it's not on the sheet, I won't read it. So at this time, if the board doesn't mind, I'll take public comment on anything that is on tonight's agenda. If anybody's here to speak on anything for tonight's agenda? No. Thank you. Moving on, just the town manager put left.
Yeah, okay, well, mostly what we've been working on is our special town meeting and the special town meeting warrant. We've been trying to get caught up and get as much information over to Plymouth County as we can on reimbursement money. Like I said earlier, when we discussed, you know, we're dealing with some of the complaints on the roadways and trying to come up with a plan to address them, address it town-wide, not just piece by piece. So like I said again, that means- by piece. So, like I said, again, that may be somewhat of a, something that we start now with those CPC, but I think it's something that's going to take a while, and it may require us to put some of it on hold until we do get a planner or a regional planner or something, someone who can run with that ball. Just around town, though, Senior Center paving is done. As you can see, Glen Owitz Way is done, and the other paving projects are finished. So, I'm glad to see that. Abington, oh, we do have a couple of openings coming up, a couple of job openings. Sorry to say that our veteran agent, Tom McCarthy, is going to be retiring in October. So, you know, he'll be missed. I think that what we're going to do going forward, though, is, as you may know or may not know, is that we were set up as a veterans district with the shared responsibilities with the town of Whitman. And as much as I'm in favor of regionalization, conceptually, it doesn't always work. And, you know, I think that they did a good job here, but I think we need to focus a little bit more and go in a different direction where we have our own dedicated veterans agent here. It, as far as cost to the town go, it won't make any difference right now. We share the expense of a full-time veterans agent and the associated benefits that go with it. So, we're already on the hook for most of that anyways. But, we also provide support staff with an administrative assistant. So, I think that that would just become one position, that we just have one full-time veterans agent that can really focus on the needs of the citizens and the veterans of Abington and forego the admin assistance. So, I've already noticed the town of Whitman of such. They're aware of it, and we'll both be posting for that position in the coming weeks. Additionally, we've posted, and we'll post again, for the position of the sealer of weights and measures. It's a, just a small position, doesn't require a lot of time. It's probably, you know, maybe 10 or 15 days throughout the year. But, we will be looking to replace that person. And, that's about it. Although, I don't know if anybody's caught any episodes of Manager's Corner, but it's-
I did. I just watched the most recent one.
So, our most recent one-
How many views do you have?
Less than some other people.
Less than others. But, yeah, it was a great meeting. And since last we've met, I've met with Deborah next door over at the library, and she's very excited that they're open and they're starting to expand their services as much as possible. I had a nice meeting with John Stone. We took a look at the facilities down there, and it's something that we're really going to have to keep an eye on in the near future. And I'm probably going to be asking this board to put together some sort of a committee to do a study on that, you know, in the coming years. Met with Suzanne Justburg down at the Senior Center. Again, there's a lot going on down there, and hoping to expand and open their services. So, people are eager to get back out to the Senior Center, so we're hoping it happens fairly soon.
Also, I just wanted to take a moment and thank Chief Majewski, who announced he'll be retiring at the end of this year, December 31st, I believe his last name was. His last name was?
He was, he will, his last official date will be August 31 of next year. He will be using personal time and after the 1st of the year, but, yeah.
So, you'll be starting-
But, he'll still be in, he'll still be chief and consultant and in contact with me.
And the deputy chief will take over the day-to-day operations. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you'll be starting the process of hiring a new police chief?
Yeah, after the 1st of the year. I think we'll do what we have to do and get the assessments going and move forward on that.
Thank you. And thank you to the chief for, I don't want to get it wrong, 32 years.
I believe it was 32 years in service.
32 years. Long time in service, so thank you. Anybody from the board have anything else? I'll take a motion, then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Any discussion on adjourned? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.